I'm calling this meeting of the Silver City Town Council to order. I'd like to invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and following that, the salute to the New Mexico State Flag.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zeiss symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
I would like to welcome all of you here tonight, and I'd like to acknowledge our town administration that is here. We have our town manager, Mr. Brown, our town attorney, Jim Reynolds, who's joining us by telephone. Welcome, Mr. Reynolds. Our town clerk, Alfred Sodio, our acting town manager, Jackie Olaya, our acting community development director, Randy Hernandez, Chief Patillo, welcome. And also, we have members of the code enforcement office with us tonight. Thank you all for being here. Thank you for what you do. And I'd also like to welcome members of the press and just members of the general community. Thank you for being here and participating in your city government. Next on the agenda is changes to the agenda. Does anyone want to make changes? No changes. Next is ceremonies, and we have one ceremony to honor the Silver City Employee of the Month. And Mr. Aaron Seavis, would you like to talk about this? I guess Mr. O'Neil is not here, right? Okay. Would you present this to him later?
Sure.
Okay. You might have to turn the microphone on.
It sounds like it's on. Thank you, Mayor, and council, and administration. I'm proud to be able to present this award to Jerry O'Neil, who's one of our lieutenants for the fire department. I will read the letter that was submitted in his behalf, if that's okay. It was written by Chief Lambert, who...
Oh, there he is. Lieutenant, come on. I'll ask the council to come down to the podium so we can all present it.
First thing we need. So, the Employee of the Month Award just got started again after a little bit of a hiatus. This is the second one that we've had, and I don't know how long it's been. It's been a few years. But Chief Lambert wrote a letter to the board. The board is made up of the town directors now, the department directors, and I'll go ahead and read that. Jerry O'Neil was returning from a doctor's appointment from Albuquerque for his wife and chose to drive over the black range at night. It was snowing that night, possibly one of the only times this year, when he topped Emery Pass. There was a break in the storm, and Jerry saw headlights pointing into the sky. Of course, that's odd. He noticed this, stopped his vehicle, and with his wife in it, and hiked down the side of the ravine, finding a passenger vehicle that had lost control and left the roadway, becoming lodged in some trees. The vehicle was heavily damaged, and the lone driver was inside and injured. Jerry helped extricate the driver and assisted him out of the ravine, up to the road into his vehicle, to Jerry's vehicle. He provided care and took the driver to GRMC for evaluation. The driver had a head injury and was extremely incoherent. Jerry performed admirably with his life-saving skills while off-duty in a situation that potentially endangered him and his spouse. This level of dedication to moral values and community service is admirable, and I believe needs to be recognized. These actions are exactly the kind of behavior we aspire to in our town. So Jerry, congratulations on this award of Employee of the Month.
(APPLAUSE).
Alfred, do you want to speak with everybody? Would you like to say a few words?
I don't believe that my actions are different than anybody else would have done. Not being physically capable of climbing down and helping, I'm sure somebody would have driven to service and called 911 and gotten help. I appreciate the recognition, but I do believe anybody would have helped in whatever way they could.
(APPLAUSE). And Councilor Ben Como would like to say a few words, and if any other council member would like to, you're free to do that. We'll start this end and go around.
Thank you, Mayor. For those that may not know, I was actually Jerry O'Neil's fire chief. I had the pleasure of hiring him. He was a great employee. People may not be aware, but Jerry actually was performing another heroic duty while he was working for the fire department. I can't remember the year it was, but it was a structured fire, and I arrived on scene and I see Jerry along with another firefighter pulling out a unconscious man out of this structured fire. So I awarded both of them the... And I'm trying to remember the medal. I think it was the Medal of Gallantry. So this is the only time that Jerry has done things like this, so I'm really proud of you, Jerry.
Any other comments? Thank you. Oh, and thank you, Mr. Brown, for bringing this program back. I remember when I got first elected as mayor, you used to have these award things outside your office with the picture. Can we bring those back? Okay, thank you. Next is proclamations, and there are none. Next is council of comments. First on the list tonight is Councilor Connaught.
Thank you, Mayor. Since our last meeting, I participated as well as several of you in the New Mexico Municipal League Municipal Day at the legislature. I was there for a couple of days, a couple of extra days for that trip, and participated in hearings in the Senate Judiciary Committee and the Senate Finance Committee. In the Senate Finance Committee, they were talking about changes to para, so that's going to affect some of our employees. And in the Senate Judiciary, they were talking about changes to the training that will be required for law enforcement. That was a really interesting experience because even though it involved law enforcement, the senator who was proposing the bill had never spoken to a law enforcement officer, which is, you know, I mean, it's something that some of us can kind of giggle about, but at the same time, I think it really had some meaning for me because it made me think about some of the things that we've been talking about lately and the fact that perhaps we haven't listened to law enforcement as much as we need to. And by "we," I mean some people. Some people have, some people haven't. I'm thankful for the law enforcement in this community who have reached out to me and given me their opinions on different matters. I hope you continue to do that because I don't know what you do. So it's good to hear what your experiences are and learn from them before making any decisions. I'd also like to talk about the warming center again. It's still open because it's still cold outside. It probably won't be for very much longer. Those of us that have been working at the warming center are continuing to work on what future warming centers or other possibilities are for the community, so stay tuned for that. I would like to thank Councilor Ben Como and Councilor Snyder, who have spent a decent amount of time there learning about the warming center. You've also made donations, which we also appreciate. Our sheriff and his undersheriff, and the third guy that's always with them, always have also been there and spent some good time there and learning a little bit about the situation and about how they can help. So I appreciate that. We have invited all the elected officials in Grant County to come, and so far, those are the ones that have spent some time there, so I'm hoping the rest of them will see this on cats and consider doing that as well. And then the last thing, I know I talked about these two a couple of meetings ago, but I'm going to talk about them again. Sergeant Laramore and Patrolman Singleton. I had a situation that they were involved in a couple of weeks ago at the warming center, and then, was it yesterday? Yesterday, they became involved in another situation that is going to involve probably a continued effort to investigate the situation. And I'm just so impressed with their professionalism. They are just two of the kindest people. The situation is kind of a unique one, and they are dealing with everyone that's involved with the utmost care and concern, and I really appreciate that. So I want to thank them again, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Ben Como. Councilor Snyder.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to mention and thank all the people behind the scenes that make the town run so efficiently as it does. If we turn on the water, we can count on the water coming out, and we have employees who sweep streets, fill potholes, keep parks clean, and numerous other departments, including police and fire, and I'd like to thank all the employees for their hard work to keep the town operating at peak performance.
Thank you. Council of Friends.
Thank you, Mayor. As the whirlwind of the legislative season keeps the days, nights, and weekends busy, I look forward to this year's final votes and spending to help improve Silver City and our neighboring communities. With any luck, we will see support beyond just unfunded mandates. I first wish to thank Councilor Connaught and the Board of the New Mexico Municipal League for another successful lobbying year. The myriad of changes to our state statutes, especially regarding appointment and replacement of absent elected officials, has been a long time coming and address the procedural ways we see our democratic bodies disempower. Dealing with the challenges we face up here on council, I will continue to boost the efforts of the Municipal League Self Insurers Fund. The variety of representation and the depth of expertise continues to be a yearly highlight. My biggest regret in my time here on council was not engaging sooner and voting with this council's majority to leave the SIF. Representation from Red River, Riedoso, and Roswell, among others, this year all spoke to concerns of fire, flood, and violence that take up so much of our time. I was wholly impressed by how compassionate and effective our insurers board is, and not just the immediate response to crises, but in the long-term behavioral health needs for staff and citizens. Seeing business ranchers in ten-gallon hats express urgency for post-traumatic stress care, lest leaders want their city employees drinking every night through their third marriage, was surprisingly refreshing. Seeing behavioral health services so normalized in our peer city governments across the state gave me hope for our own. Earlier that week, we had a busy Tuesday presenting through the first draft of our consultant's strategic housing plan that put numbers to what we've been hearing from the public with challenges finding and affording housing. With further and more specific comments reserved for this evening's presentation with regards to land use and zoning code, I would like to use my time to refer back to our city's present housing plan last revised in 2010. The town of Silver City is experiencing an affordable housing predicament that diminishes residents' quality of life while crimping the town's ability to take advantage of impending economic development opportunities. The demand for safe, affordable housing is higher than what the area market has to offer. Our town's 2004 comprehensive plan is quoted. The rise in cost of real estate in the historic districts has paralleled that of the town and county. There is a shortage of rental housing in the area for employees and those on fixed incomes. In addition, it notes the poor conditions of owner-occupied rental units, the limited availability of affordable rental and for-sale units, and the social impact of high costs that disproportionately affects our people. I hope it's not too far of a stretch to note how much we still have to address that has echoed in this new draft plan. While said plan can point towards successes such as the Hillcrest Senior Apartments and Western Student Dormitories, the exacerbation we've seen in these last 20 years is in no small part of the threatened closures of Jose Barrios and Sixth Street Elementary. Huge, huge black eyes for this community personally. While we all heard Superintendent Hawkins refer to larger Department of Health statistics about statewide disenrollment, I can confidently point to the lack of housing parents can afford contributing to our schools declining enrollment rates. Answering the question of how much our council and municipal government can handle and what segments of our community and markets deserve focus, it's hard for me to not think that attention and effort wouldn't positively impact others beyond the scope of the present draft. I stand by our unanimous vote to increase support to 150% of median income. The construction techniques and standards in higher-end housing ought to be shared across the spectrum of affordability. I need to see this more with local subcontractors bringing expertise derived from larger construction projects to our residential markets. With the production of quality housing in every neighborhood and district, we can help right-size the housing so larger families can have access to larger homes, seniors can stay close to their friends and have an easier living space to maintain, workers can start to build wealth instead of seeing half their paycheck or more disappear to keep a substandard roof over their head. Needed expert medical personnel can grow roots beyond their short-term contracts, and families don't have to move so frequently, improving the educational outcomes of our children. Mitigating the risks of financing, construction, and maintenance are not easy tasks, and I wish to be conscientious of the formidable challenges us on council and city leadership have been presented with. But not facing this challenge means further squeezing of people we all rely on in ways subtle, tragic, and preventable, which has been ongoing for years. I've already seen too much, and I'm hopeful to see council dig into foundational problems through the bevy of tools and recommendations from experts in our local bodies and dedicated city staff. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to acknowledge my appreciation for all of you here tonight. I've worked with most of you in one way or the other. As a matter of fact, our community functions because of all the volunteers in the community. We have so many events throughout the year, and those events are important. Not only do they contribute to the culture of Silver City, but they contribute to gross receipts tax, which is part of our operating budget, a lot of our operating budget, and lodgers tax, which allows us to market Silver City to other areas. Unlike town administrators or town workers, which we really appreciate, and this town couldn't function without them, but unlike the paid positions, you do it voluntarily. You take your time on the weekends and nights, all for the benefit of Silver City. And I also want to thank the Daily Press and the Grant County News. You're at all of our meetings and many of the events that take place in town, and we appreciate you and the good publicity that you're able to provide and let the community know what's going on at a local level. So thank you very much. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes, the regular minutes of February 25, 2025. Do I hear a motion? Councilor Snyder?
I move to approve the regular minutes of February 25, 2025.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second? Councilor Ben Como? Thank you. Any discussion or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda is public input, and I see that nobody signed up. So we'll move to Agenda Item 8, which is reports. First on the agenda is Heidi Ocas, who will give a report on the High Desert Animal Shelter. And I'd like to ask those giving reports if you could bring the microphone down to where you're speaking so we can all hear your report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor, staff, council. Thank you for having me tonight. You should have received some handouts. We'll take a look at some of the numbers. On the first handout, which is the intake for the town Silver City, I won't read all the numbers, but across the bottom, dog impounds were 148, dog strays 83, owner turn-ins 103, for a total of 334. 62 dogs were returned to owner. Cat impounds were 128, cat strays 206, cat owner turn-ins 124, for a total of 458 cats and 15 returned to owner. We took in $2,255 in impound fees and $5,543.25 in licensing, and adoptions back into the city was 133. If you look at the comparison over the years, to kind of put it in a graph, because I don't know, it makes it a little bit easier, you can see that we're sort of on a steady hold. We go up and down a little bit, but pretty much straight across as far as the intake. I would really like to see intake drop, but I'm not sure exactly how we can make all that happen. Does anybody have any questions on the number part of it?
Any questions from the council? Council of Friends?
Yes.
Many of the figures with us this evening, but just as far as folks that are taking advantage of the discounted and free spay and neutering and vaccination numbers, sort of the A to B for me is usually, we can help owners be able to not produce more animals than we have the ability to take care of in this community. How have you been finding those numbers over the past year?
About the same. We have increased. I do have some numbers here. We gave out 1,137 spay and neuter coupons. Our initial HALT program, you can qualify for four coupons per year per household, and that will pay for about two-thirds of the cost of the spay and neuter. It's regardless of income. If you do have proof of limited income, we double your coupon, and that will pay for 100% of it at most of the veterinarians here. The problem is getting people to understand that they need to use it. Recently, within the last couple of weeks, we had four different litters of puppies come in. Nine puppies, 10 puppies, eight puppies, six puppies, all of these litters, and that's what needs to stop.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Go ahead, Ms. O'Neil.
Yeah, I do just have a couple other things. The shelter as a whole, we took in 1,724 total animals. That's not counting the few bunny rats and guinea pigs that we do take in occasionally. 634 were adopted or placed into rescues or sanctuaries. We had 178 returned to owner. I'd like to see that go up, too, with our microchipping program. I don't know why it hasn't grown up higher, but sometimes they don't reregister the microchips. We did have 719 animals that were deemed unadoptable, and we had 137 adoptable dogs and cats that were euthanized due to overcrowding or at an owner's request. So really, all in all, the numbers of our euthanasia are quite low compared to many other shelters because we are an open intake shelter. We don't discriminate against anything coming in. We are having some staffing issues. I think like everybody else, we have four positions available right now. We're hiring an animal caregiver, a crematory operator, an administration assistant, and an assistant manager. So we have all four of those positions open right now. Our thrift shop is doing exceptionally well. That's what funds the HALT spay and neuter program 100%. We also help keep some of the things out of the landfill, which is good. And we also share a lot with the community. We make donations to SPIN, to the Gospel Mission, to the Continental Divide Trail people. We've just donated some shorts and towels for the waterworks building. We've helped out the warming center. In fact, I have two dog crates in the back of my car to be delivered up there, and we donate books to SWAG. So we try to help out the other nonprofits. The money from our thrift store also allowed us to build a complete new laundry room. So we have three industrial washing machines and two industrial dryers, all brand new, which is really nice. And we were able to rebuild our puppy room, which was in dire need of, you know, it was originally built with sheet rock walls and then bathroom boarded over it, so it's now cinder block walls. And also through our thrift store, like I said, we were able to issue out 1,137 spay and neuter coupons, and we hope to continue that. We still are hoping to someday build a new adoption center. We have some logistic things that we need to work out. We did meet with the city, and we were able to put in a new two-inch water meter and then water line going into the building so that we should hopefully have enough water flow for the new building. The other issue is that we're right on top of and on the edge of Boston Hill, and we have to be careful about any holes that we create that go down into mine shafts. So they did get the bat entrance completed, and I don't know where they're at on the bat numbers for the mine shaft that did came in. And also, just a reminder that we do pet cremations for people, and so if you've lost your beloved pet, we will definitely try to take care of it as best we can. We recently did a goat and a mini horse as well, and we've done guinea pigs. Any questions?
Councilor Ben Como?
How would you charge for cremation services?
It depends on the weight of the animal. It can run anywhere from about $70 up to $180, depending on the size of the animal.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? How important are community volunteers in your operation?
Extremely. You know, our thrift store, we have 51 volunteers that make that thrift store happen, and without them, we would be nothing at the thrift store. We do have a lot of people that come up to the animal shelter, our dog walkers, and the people that come play with the cats are instrumental in getting those animals adopted out. They really help socialize the animals, they work with training on the animals, and that makes a huge difference. We also do have quite a few community service workers that come. Because of the liability issues, we can only have them work in parts of the shelter. We can't put them in with the stray animals. But they wash dishes, they scoop the poop, they help bathe animals and walk dogs and play with cats also.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
And I'd also like to thank Code Enforcement for the work you do with the leash ordinance in the city. That helps a great deal. Thank you. Next, under Reports, is an update by Simon Wheaton Smith on the planning and zoning presentation sites southwest on land use code. Mr. Wheaton Smith?
Mr. Aaron, councilors, first of all, thank you for this time. And I know I've given you a handout which talks a little bit about the history, but obviously, we have people who watch us who don't know. So I might go back to 2010, when a counselor was the sponsor for the ordinance that created the code ordinances for 2010, and I thought we did a very good job. And life moved forward. I'm no longer on the council. I'm Planning and Zoning Commission, and I'm currently the chair. And it occurs to me, we didn't do a very good job when I was on the council. Councilors are very, very busy, and I thought we were very diligent, but a number of things escaped us. Well, time moved forward, and our previous chair, Commissioner Nick Seibel, a couple of times mentioned things. He had mentioned, wouldn't it be nice if Planning and Zoning could have some public meetings to find out what do people really think of our land use and zoning code? Why would anyone care? Because it affects everyone who does anything with a building or anything else like that. And I thought, well, that's a good point. He also said, we ought to think about form-based code. And what's that? And in words of one syllable, the town uses a use-based code. Everything is based on the use. And that goes back to the beginning of the last century, a Supreme Court ruling. And form-based code still considers use, but it's much lower down in priority. And is there somewhere in between? I don't know. Well, life moved forward, and one of our commissioners asked a question, an innocent one, about ADUs, accessory dwelling units. about ADUs, accessory dwelling units. And the following year, two thousand and twenty-four, I was elected as the chair. And I thought, well, let's mix this up a little bit. And it turned out that the ADU, the accessory dwelling unit problem, really wasn't an ADU problem. It's, is there anything we can do to make the code more efficient and save time? Sounds very simple. Well, it's more than a year later, and I have a book about this thick with a hundred and forty-four odd comments that people have given us. And we've collected those into groups, and then we condensed them into another set of groups. And we've also discussed some of the issues that we might want to dig deeper into. But the council is the authority. The council is the governing authority, and we don't really want to drift off course too much. So what we're looking for is for you to think about what we talk about tonight. The housing plan, yes. And the key points that maybe we're thinking about in the land use code rewrite. And what do you think? Do you think we are on course? Should we be focusing in other areas? Should be perhaps not focusing in some? And I've just got a few here. And I'd like to also point out that we have our consultant Carlos, who will give you some more detailed things that I think will clarify them. And then our vice chair is here this evening. If, if Vice Chair Krishna Metalstadt would like to talk also. So I'm going to go through this pretty quickly. Why? Because this isn't the time for details. This is the time for, are we overall looking at the right things? I don't know. And I will also tell you that one or two of the topics I will mention, I'm not an expert in them. But we have experts, and so that's what we want to use. So I'll just go quickly through a few points. One of the things that we will be proposing will be more of what's called mixed-use zoning. Mixed use allows a mix of residential and large commercial. It allows the ability to have something like a corner stall. And those have been shown time and time and again to be quite effective. We also think that our land use tables probably need to be reviewed. They were created, I think, nineteen ninety-nine, was it? From the previous ordinance, which I have in nineteen sixty, land use code, which is a little bit out of date. But is that really reflecting what is happening? And is it really reflecting what you, the council, want to happen in the future? So that's something. This one is something I don't know a lot about, but I've been certainly listening to people, and that is fire mitigation. Not entirely convinced that that's necessarily part of the land use code, but I've been doing a lot of discovering about this. Silver City is rated extremely high. We've had insurance things, binders canceled. I was non-renewed. I went to another organization. I go to binder. Two weeks later, that was it. It went too. Fire mitigation, there are things that can be done. And I'm not an expert, but I've certainly read about this. And I'm doing some of them myself. Just yesterday, I removed one tree and did tree lowering, which is where you remove the lower branches on four more trees. And I did one more tree today. These are things that can only help all of us. So we want to look into that and give it to people who actually know what they're talking about. We've got an excellent fire department. So obviously, we would involve them. Another issue that has arisen, manufactured homes. You might say, what on earth is the problem with that? Well, we have a lot of them, and we have manufactured home parks. And I had no clue what was happening. But what I learned was a number of manufactured homeowners own their mobile home, but they rent the land. And what happens if somebody else buys that land? One of two things can happen. The rents go up, or they can be evicted. So far in this town, it's the rents going up. You might say, well, that's easy. Just have them move. Any idea what it takes to move financially a mobile home or a manufactured home? It's thousands of dollars. And where's it going to go? There are some suggested ideas. I'm not going to go into them now, but it is something I would want the council to think about. Other things that the town can do that don't encumber large funds. Another issue that we will want to talk about, and I'm sure Carlos will mention it, is density standards. Moving a little bit away from use standards. And I was talking to someone today, said, have you thought about tiny homes? Yes. Tiny homes as well as ADUs, accessory dwelling units. And we are looking at the possibility of cottage courts. Now, it isn't a simple solution because you still have to have the infrastructure. You've got to have the sewer, the water, the electricity, and things like that. There are over forty-four problems with the current code. One of them is a case where you can actually come up with two different answers for the square footage of the accessory dwelling unit. Why? Because the word lesser than or greater than is in the wrong place. They have to be fixed because when there's a bug in the code, it slows everybody down. It costs money. Another thing that we've discovered is, there's a lot in that code. I've read it quite a few times, and I'm part of the reason that the code needs to be fixed. But it was a long time ago, two thousand and ten. One of the things that we might be suggesting is that planning and zoning, in each January, we do a couple of things. Our Open Meetings Act resolution, we elect officers. And I'm going to suggest, unless the council finds this not to be an ideal, that perhaps we do an annual review of what are the issues in the previous year and what should P and Z focus on to create continuous improvement. So instead of waiting fifteen years for a massive rewrite, how about annual refinements? Continuous improvement. That's just a few of the key points. And what I'd like to do is to ask if our vice chair, do you wish to add anything? In which case, I'd like to hand in any questions first of all. Thank you. If I could ask our consultant Carlos to address some points. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilors. So as Simon was saying, and I'm sure Jackie could also talk about this, but yeah, we are, we are starting, is that a little better? We are starting a rewrite process for some of the land use code, trying to amend some of that, trying to make it a little bit more efficient and easier both for staff and private property owners to understand what they could do with their property and figure out how to, how to move forward with different kinds of development proposals. The intention of tonight is really just, I think, I think one of the big things is recognizing that P and Z and staff have done a lot of work on this already and to introduce just the fact that myself, staff, P and Z, and other stakeholders are going to start on some of this process to figure out what those barriers are and figure how we can rewrite and amend that. Another part is just ask councilors to start thinking about land use code, to think about development issues, and to think about how the town wants to grow, how the town wants to regulate development, how the town wants to think about what its role is in the regulation of different kinds of development proposals. And lastly, we really want to see if there's any immediate concerns from council, whether there's a concern, suggestions, or directions about how we can start to move forward with this process. This will be a relatively long and complicated process. And there will be a lot of involvement for, for additional action. But just as we're starting this, to try to get some direction from council on how we can move forward and proceed and what kinds of items we should be bringing to, to the council. Staff, myself, P and Z, and again, other stakeholders, we will be bringing in to try to have these conversations, to try to figure out what to eventually bring you. But on this handout, did all the councilors get the handout? So on this handout, we've got this, this cover page with some of these kind of general intentions. So I've just broken out some of the stuff that P and Z has already started into four kind of intentions of how we're thinking about amending some of the code. And on the back of that page, we've got a little section just where councilors can, can fill out some of their, again, comments, concerns, direction, what you're excited by, what you want to see, things like that. If you could start thinking about that, whether it's tonight, whether it's over the next week, whether it's over the next couple of weeks, but if you could start to think about that, fill some of that out and get that back to Jackie. That will help staff, myself, and P and Z start to figure out, again, what the direction is of how we can move forward with some of the land use code updates. And yeah, next step, so we're gonna, we're gonna be working really closely with P and Z and staff on, on trying to develop this language. It's going to have to go through legal processes, a lot of stakeholder review, a lot of kind of technical revisions. But we'll, we'll be working with council and, and the community on that. So yeah, I'll open it up to any questions or if there's any, again, any concerns, direction, comments that council has right now that we could start considering, that would be really helpful as well.
Any questions or comments from the council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a report by Fire Marshal Eloy Vasquez on stage one fire restrictions.
Can you guys hear me okay? Good evening, Mayor Lanner, Town Council, Town Service City staff, guests and attendants that are with us tonight. I want to introduce myself for those who might not know who I am. My name is Eloy Vasquez. I am the Deputy Chief of Fire Prevention for Silver City Fire Department. I'm also known really well as a fire marshal here in town. Once again, thank you for allowing me the time to stand before you all and speak for the next several minutes about an important concern that's surrounding our community here for two thousand and twenty-five. Last week, Fire Chief Lambert and I have been monitoring the weather and fire conditions that are present within the city limits as well as conditions within our ETGA. Due to the lack of precipitation in two thousand and twenty-four and up to date, much vegetation area remains dry, and it's getting drier. Winter season is upon us with the abundance of fine and medium-type fuels within our community. We have rolling hills to rain, and right now, we're in windy season. All this presents a strong concern for the need to protect our community from the dangers of wildland fires. After meeting with Chief Lambert and talking about these strong concerns, we made the decision to enact stage one fire restrictions within the city limits. This is, this is going to be in order to help protect properties and more importantly, human life at all costs. We must ensure that those inside city limits as well as those outside follow these fire restrictions. As a small-town community, let's work together towards keeping everyone safe during these upcoming weather, upcoming warmer and hotter times of the two thousand and twenty-five year. I believe you guys all got a stage one fire restriction letter. I will read that again for, for the council as well as for, for those in attendance this evening. This letter will be distributed through all the town departments, social media pages, and the community, rail stations, newspapers, whatever we can do to engage highly with the public on this matter. So for the letter that we have, which is the one that I sent you guys, and for the community, you guys will be seeing these around town, all over, as well as social media pages. So this is the drought and local fire conditions, stage one fire restrictions letter, pursuant to the Town Service City Ordinance, section eighteen dash twenty-four, paragraph nine. The Fire Chief, the Deputy Chief, the Town, and the Town Service City have declared that a state of fire danger does presently exist. By the order of Deputy Chief of Fire Prevention, the following restrictions are in effect. No burning or maintaining of campfires. No open burning to include burning of yardways, tree limbs, and weeds. For this time, we are in windy season. We will not be issuing burn permits, just to be safe and sorry. You all approve grills with appropriate covers and lids are approved. Any other outdoor wood or charcoal burning device shall have protective fire screens, prior approval from the Fire Department, which would probably be myself, Chief Lambert, or if we're busy, the ship personnel on scene or on ship, excuse me. Underground fire pits for use of meal preparation shall have appropriate covers such as a screen, metal siding, and order. Fires used to prepare hot coals must have a protective screen and a five-foot clearance around the entire fire pit. Fire pits must have prior approval from the Silver City Fire Department, who will issue special burn permit. This will have a lot of safety implications in place. These restrictions are effective tomorrow, Wednesday, March twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five. They shall remain in effect until conditions approved and will only be lifted by the Fire Marshal or the Fire Chief. Anyone caught in violations or subject to the following penalties: a fine of not less than one hundred dollars and not more than five hundred dollars, or imprisonment of up to thirty days. Once again, I do thank you, Mayor Lanner, City Council, and Town Service City staff and the community. That's all I have for now. If the weather does improve, these stages, stage one fire restrictions will get lifted. If they do get any worse, we will go into stage two fire restrictions at a later date, which will encompass a lot more fire restrictions to include no fireworks use, even though fireworks are not permitted at this time. Smoking, any kind of hot work such as welding, grinding, any kind of torching, parking on grass, making sure vehicles are towing trailers or have their chains properly secured, or not providing any kind of sparks from dragging those on pavement. There'll be a lot more fire restrictions as we see fit to add on to the stage two fire restrictions. I just hope we can get some precipitation down in the future so it gives us a little bit of peace in mind to, you know, not have to worry about the fire season in our community. That's all I have, Town Council, Mayor Lanner.
Are there any questions from the Town Council?
Mayor Lanner.
Comments? Councilor Prince?
That'd be a question, best for Alex and process that we have right now. So folks aren't going to be burning yardways, tree limbs, and weeds. In the municipality, we still offer pickup for yard waste that might be coming out if people are starting to work on their homes and defensible space this spring?
We do it once a year for each home.
Once a year for each home on that one. Okay. I also just want to make sure if people need to get in touch with that, then check in with the dispatch centers, non-emergency line?
Public Works, three eight eight forty-six.
Three eight eight forty-six forty. Ask for the Public Works Department. Phenomenal. And then probably similar, but what would be the public process? If folks do have buried fire pits and they just want to be able to check in with the Fire Department, what's the best way to call in and schedule some time for somebody to come on by just to make sure everybody's doing best practices?
So the best way to call, to do that is just give me a phone call. I, I pretty much work twenty-four seven. My phone's with me twenty-four seven. I do have a fire inspector who's willing to give me a hand after hours during the daytime as well. My contact number is going to be area code five seven five, five one nine eight six nine zero. That is the Fire Marshal's telephone number that's with me twenty-four seven. If anybody would like to discuss or have any concerns or questions, they can come at that telephone number. Or they can visit with me at the office if I'm available, which is at the city annex second floor. Past, past community development down to the hall to the right. That would be at twelve oh three North Hudson Street. They can also get ahold of Station One, Silver Fire Station One, or Two, and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen who work on our ship can actually take that information and pass it along to me or my fire inspector. to me or my fire inspector, and we can do those inspections to make sure it's in compliance.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Thank you, Fire Marshal Voskus, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor Lander.
Manager Brown, do you have any reports? Okay, thank you, no reports. Next on the agenda is public hearings, and there are none. Next is Item 10, unfinished business, and there is none. Next is Agenda Item 11, new business. New Business Agenda Item A is the approval slash disapproval of a public celebration permit application for two of the Hila VIP Beer Garden for April 26, 2025, with alcohol served from 1:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. at 601 North Bullitt Street, Silver City, New Mexico, Distillery License 000032, 203 South Mill Road, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061. And we have with us Jack Brennan and Brandy Lieber.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and City Staff. We come before you to ask permission to serve alcohol that day during the downtown criterion race, April 26, 2025.
Any questions? Do I hear a motion? Councilor Ben Cono?
I move to approve a public celebration permit application for the Tour Hila VIP Beer Garden for April 26, 2025, with alcohol served from 1:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. at 601 North Bullitt Street, Silver City, New Mexico, Liquor License Holder 1, Little Toad Creek Brewery and Distillery, License Number SBL000032, 203 South Mill Road, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061.
Do I hear a second? Councilor Cono?
I'll second that motion, stated.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next is Agenda Item 11B, a presentation by Bobby Shaw regarding services for people in need, that is SPIN. Mr. Shaw?
Yes. Good evening, council members, mayor, officials, community. I've been asked to report out for supporting people in need, and I have figures for January and some updates for February, but we'll start with January. With me, I also have, as support, the shelter manager, Ryan Panier back there, and he does a fantastic job keeping things in order. As you can imagine, sometimes it gets quite interesting. Anyway, so we wanna make sure that everybody has a current idea of what's going on at SPIN, and to let you know that SPIN is going into so much more than just a shelter. There are several programs and many locations that serve the community. To name a few, there's Day Have Life Skills Program, which is a partnership with the New Mexico Sentencing Commission. We administer the housing piece of Linkages Program in partnership with the New Mexico Mortgage and Finance Authority and HMS, who administers the service side of the Linkages Program. We have certified case managers who assist in coordinating care for the clients throughout the region, and they do much more than just care, they provide rides and set up appointments. We have Representative Payee Program to assist people in rural southwest New Mexico to help manage their money. Some of these clients also receive case management services. There are three recovery homes in the region, there are two in Silver City. These homes have a waiting list of about three months. Some of the shelter data that we have, in the winter, the shelter has a population of about 45 people per night. In January, there were 1,222 beds throughout the month of January in the shelter, that's an average of about 39. The count was reduced by about 10 people on the nights that the warming center was open, so that's quite a help. That helps supporting people in need, get their, spread the resources out and utilize it much more effectively, so that's a great help. Roughly two-thirds of those who stay the night at the shelter are engaging in other services, either those offered by us or services offered by other agencies in the community. Again, those services would be Day Have or some therapy sessions, daily life skills. Also in the month of January, they served 2015 meals, which breaks down to about 65 meals per day, and were able to provide almost 600 showers, 598. SPIN was able to get two people into permanent and sustainable housing, provided one bus ticket and one sent one person to rehab. There were an additional 1,047 encounters that were not part of the night shelter, meaning that there were other services that were offered to these people. At the shelter, they do medication management. This includes being licensed by the State Board of Pharmacy to dispense medications and coordinating with doctors. Currently, provide this service to about 20 people. Controlled substances are not dispensed. The total cost of operating the shelter is about $1,500 a day, that does include staff wages and insurance, rent, utilities, waste removal, does not include support services such as case managers. They're paid separately through insurance programs. We're working on ways to track other services that are needed, such as either fire or police. We're still working on mechanisms to report that without violating any kind of confidential information. If there are issues that rise to a critical incident, those are reported as required to the state agencies. Upcoming projects for the shelter include working with the Department of Health to provide programs and promote harm reduction. They're also starting a new one, which is... Nope, I lost my place, sorry about that. Mental health first aid class in partnership with Center for Health Innovation. SPIN will also be reporting out at the council meetings monthly, so we'll be able to start tracking some of the metrics of, you know, depending on weather and when the warming center is open and whatnot, to see if, how the numbers go up and down, meals provided, services provided. So are there any questions that?
Any questions or comments from the council? Councilor Cono and then Councilor Prince?
I have several questions, I wanna write them down, since you only let me talk twice. The first thing is, your number of guests is interesting to me. You're saying that there's 45 per night. Well, we're getting about 50 at the warming center, so does that mean we have over about 100 people who are unhoused at this point? That's a question I have for you. Another one, I'm not, another one is, you talked about not being able to keep track of your police and EMS calls. That's just a sheet of paper where you make a check mark every time you call cops or police or fire, and I'd like to see that on your next report, because it is important to us to see how much our services are being depleted by SPIN. Another question I have is about meals. Are you serving three meals per day?
Yes.
I'm also wondering if, say, someone doesn't come in at 5:00 for dinner and they're hungry at 9:00, are you serving them something? And then the last question I have is about, it says here that you're licensed by the State Board of Pharmacy to dispense medications. So we had an incident recently where a member of your staff took medications that belonged to a patient to the warming center and tried to give them to us to dispense them. We are not certified to do that. So I wanna know why that was happening and if that's something that's allowed, was permissible by the State Board of Pharmacy, or if that's something that needs to be worked on so that it doesn't happen again.
Okay. I actually don't have an answer to that specific questions, I will get answers for that. Like I said, for the EMS and police, we're working on reporting mechanisms. It's not so much as putting a little check mark on the board, it's ensuring that the people are putting the check mark on the board, so. All right. And then, yeah, and I know that we're working on counting all the unhoused in the county, so we should be able to come up with a number, but it wouldn't surprise me.
And meals? The meals?
Meals? Yeah, there's meal times, when the kitchen's closed, kitchen's closed. Obviously, if somebody is hungry, starved to death, the staff are very good at helping somebody out.
And are you serving three meals a day?
Councilor Prince?
I just wanted to commend you, the amount of services that are getting provided, and especially with what we've had to hear up here on council. When I was doing my bill check yesterday, I know we're only 50 days into the session, but two of the four bills that have gotten passed right now have been with state priority for behavioral healthcare services. And I just wanna say them for it there, hope to be able to see more support and services coming your way, and just ensuring the best success so that we can help people out. The amount of inequality conversations I have with constituents about just how difficult it has been for so many folks that are kind of, first on a marginal level, particularly when it comes to housing, and then they're out in the streets. Sometimes people forget some of the details about how folks are in RVs first, you know, and then that might be the last thing before they fall down the next rung on the ladder. And so all of the services and time and effort that are being put in, I know that comes a great stress and it comes a great effort, and I just wanna say thank you so much for all the work that you guys are doing.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. And just as a side note, you know, the clientele that's supporting people in need are much more than just the homeless, there are the people that have, that are a little delayed and need some extra help. So there's actually a wide range of clients at the shelter that we help. So thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Any other questions, Councilor Ben Cono? Yes, I have a question. You have here that roughly two-thirds of those who stay at the shelter are engaging in other services, either by what you are offering or by other agencies in the community. Can you talk a little bit about what type of services you're referring to here?
There's Representative Payee Program, it's actually a part that I'm actually a part of. We have roughly 30 clients in Silver City, a couple in Demming, and they're delayed, so we've been awarded through Social Security to manage their money with them. So we have, we get with them and find out what bills they have, what they want us to pay, and try to build an account for them to have. Other services include Day Have, which is basically life building skills and having navigate through the different difficulties of everyday life. What else do they have, Brian?
I have trauma recovery for the people that engage in other services besides shelters, trauma recovery for any of those people, that's another program that we do, that for the ones that help engage with SPIN, for that people to deal with the trauma recovery.
So, and then work through Linkages to help with housing. There's a half dozen different services that are offered actually at SPIN, and then they coordinate with the other businesses and services in the community.
Can I add to your question?
And I also agree with Councilor Cono, I think that you ought to be providing, at least we have an idea of what type of EMS calls and police calls that are requested at the SPIN Center. We could get that information like you have here from EMS and from the Police Department, but I think, I think it would be good to see that they jive with the calls that they respond to, you know?
Agreed, agreed. Yeah, that's actually something that I've been discussing, I've been pushing, I wanna get out in front of these things and report them out. So we're not reacting, but we're being proactive with incidents that happen. So hey, this is what's gone on, this is the steps that we took to take care of the issue. So those are the steps that we're working for, towards.
Thank you. Councilor Snyder?
Yeah, I just wanna commend you for all that you guys are doing, and I heard that there is an excellent training that you actually did for the community last week with communicating with people with mental health problems, and I just wanna let you know that I've heard very positive things on that training.
Oh, thank you, thank you very much, I appreciate that, and I'll pass that on.
Councilor Cono?
So you mentioned the Payee Program, and I do have some questions about that. I guess, I have two questions. The first one is, do you work with those guests or those clients, however you refer to them, as, so until they're able to take over that responsibility themselves? And also, my other question is, should someone become a Payee there and they decide for whatever reason, you know, they want their mother to do it, or they want their brother to do it or something, how easy is it for them to switch from being a Payee, y'all being a Payee to the person that they choose?
Truthfully, you're working in a bureaucracy, it's not easy at all, 'cause you have to request through the Social Security disability for to have your Payee changed. And if you want it to be your mother or whoever, another Payee, then they would end up, Social Security would end up notifying me, I would collect, tabulate their funds, cut a check, send it to Social Security, then Social Security will send it to the next Payee. Social Security is taking a long time to process paperwork.
And do you help them to get to that point, or do you?
Yeah, if they request it, I mean, either I can request it or they can request it, either party can request it.
Any other questions or comments? I have a few. When you say that you are, your case managers who assist in coordinating care for clients throughout the region, what do you include in quote "region"?
Well, they work through all of Grant County, Luna County, and Hidalgo, and actually, they've provided limited services such as transportation with clients coming back from the hospital in Las Cruces and El Paso. So it's, you know, there are specific services that are in the three counties, but then they'll help out if need be to go help a client.
So have y'all considered a SPIN Center in Demming, for example, or?
There is. There is. There is a center in Demming.
But y'all are still bringing homeless up to Silver City?
Not as a general rule, I can only think of one off the top of my head that was in Demming, but is doing much better up here in Silver, there are more services provided. Demming does have services such as Day Have and living classes like that, as well as Hidalgo County, but the bulk of the services are here in Silver City.
Well, thank you for that very detailed report. As mayor, when things are not going good in a community, I get the phone calls.
Sure you do.
And the warming center has opened up, and that's bringing additional people into that area in Silver City. And for the people who live in that area, for a long time, they pretty much had the areas to themselves, and it was pretty much quiet, you know, but with the influx of some homeless people who have mental issues, it's really created issues for some of the people who live in that area. I'll give you an example. There's a house on Gold Street, and I was called over to look at a street light that had gone out, and so I drove up and there was one of the people that had walked up from SPIN, standing right outside the kitchen window of a lady who's single and working in her kitchen, and you can imagine how that would freak out someone who would feel vulnerable to that without knowing what's coming next. Do you have any sort of program, and I'll ask, at some point, I'll ask the warming center people? people this question too, to talk to the people who come to these centers about maintaining the decorum? I know with the mental issues, that's not straightforward, but do you have a program about coexisting peacefully?
All the clients are met with on a regular basis, some more frequent than others, and in a few cases, three times a week, and in those particular individuals, I know that they are reminded that there are standards that need to be kept for living in a community. That's probably about the nicest way I could phrase that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
I've had a request for a restroom break, do I hear a motion to take a ten-minute break?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Conlon?
I move for a ten-minute recess.
Motion, take a ten-minute break, is there a second? Counselor Prince, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, please note the time, it is twelve minutes after, so we will come back in exactly ten minutes and start the meeting. Will the council please take their seats? Next is agenda item eleven C, a presentation by Wesley Gray regarding the PNM Public Safety Power Shut-Off. Mr. Gray?
Yeah, I just want to do a quick introduction. My name is Kevin, good afternoon, mayors, members of council, my name is Kevin Perdosa, I'm the local government and community manager for PNM for Southern New Mexico. First of all, I just wanted to commend your emergency management team, especially the fire department, they have been very instrumental in providing us information as far as your critical infrastructure and things that we have to keep an eye out when we are evaluating things, and especially whenever we have extreme weather conditions rolling into our area. So, thank you very much for partnering with us in that and helping us work through that, and Alex as well, thank you very much for always being available when we reach out, when we need something. So, I just want to say thank you. And I'd like to introduce Wesley Gray, he is our executive director for field operations amongst many of the other things that he does. He will be presenting today on some of the efforts that PNM is putting together to stay ahead of the wildfire season, and also share more information as far as our public safety power shut-off program. So, with that, Wes?
Mr. Mayor, council, town staff, it's good to see some of you again, and we want to provide some updates about PNM's wildfire prevention program and public safety power shut-off. We've been meeting with town staff for a year, and we've been providing some updates and getting feedback on how we can improve our program. So, with the packet I gave, we're going to just provide some updates on things that PNM has been doing over the last twelve months. We've been doing a lot more in the vegetation management arena in and around Grant County. We have a big project going on in the Gila National Forest where we're expanding the rideaways. A lot of our vegetation management work is going around, providing resiliency so that we don't have as many power outages, but it's also there for wildfire protection. Our wildfire program is really ramped up to provide for safety in our communities and for the citizens thereof. So, we're doing a lot more vegetation management work, we're leveraging some software that utilizes AI to help us optimize our program. So, a lot going on in the vegetation management realm. We're doing a lot of hardening of the electric system. We had surveys done back in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, where we did aerial patrols of our system. That was a top-down kind of inspection, and we did a bunch of repairs associated with that. This past year, we did a poll test and treatment program, where we went through pretty much all the polls here in Grant County, we identified a number of them that didn't meet strength requirements, so there had been about two hundred polls that had been replaced in twenty twenty-four. There's another few hundred that we have to do other miscellaneous repairs on, so those repairs will continue in twenty twenty-five and hopefully get them done before twenty twenty-six. Again, the whole focus is wildfire safety. We don't want any of our infrastructure failing and that being a potential source of ignition out there, given the dry conditions, you know, the fire marshals talked about it, and it's really heartening that we're all kind of working together to do the same aim, to try to protect our communities. As part of that hardening program, we've also changed our construction standards. So, in areas, we're trying to take advantage of putting infrastructure underground where we can, but that's a really expensive proposition, especially when you're digging in rock. So, we're hardening the overhead system that's out there, so we're putting up heavier-duty poles, heavy-duty crossarms, again, replacing a lot of older infrastructure so that that system is far more resilient and not as prone to failure. We've seen the weather over the last twelve months and the climate change really being hard on our system. We've had a lot more frequent outages, we've had more sustained outages as some aging infrastructure has failed, and so we're working to implement systems to try to improve the performance of the system, try to improve the reliability. And with some of that is including utilizing some other technology and trying to protect communities. So, as weather conditions start to deteriorate, you know, our normal wind season, which we typically say is April first, started a little early, and so PNM has implemented some software products where we're doing some extensive fire modeling, fire risk modeling, so we're looking at temperature, wind speed, wind gust forecasts, fuel moistures, relative humidity, and we're modeling four times a day. So, as the National Weather Service issues forecasts, we take those forecasts, plug them in a model, and look at how the system would perform with that and what kind of risk there is for potential wildfire. And so, it's gone from being, you know, a concept about a year ago to being implemented. We were really hoping to wait till April first, but it's, the month of March kind of came up on us, and we ramped up our program a little early. Last week was a particular challenge. We implemented a couple of programmatic things to try to prevent power line interaction, anything blowing in it, whether it's a tree falling in it, or a piece of debris blowing up in the line, we're looking at trying to prevent anything from causing it. So, when we see those conditions and those forecasts for those conditions start to deteriorate, we can implement a couple different steps. One is a step where we put our devices in our substations and out on the line in what we call a non-reclosed status. So, if anything comes in contact with them, they open up, de-energize the lines, and again, it's providing for some safety. But when conditions get extreme, and there's a forecast coming up for the end of the week in certain parts of the state where it looks like it's going to be extreme, we would consider what we could call a public safety power shut-off, which is, we would proactively turn off the power for the period of time for that weather event to move through, so that we remove that risk. It's just too risky with the fires that we've seen in other parts of the state, over in Lincoln County and up in more San Miguel County over the last few years, those catastrophic wildfires can be devastating for communities, and we want to remove power lines from being a potential cause. As we were considering it, and we're doing some outreach to, you know, some of our consumers, we had some folks on social media complain about, well, you know, here we go, we're just turning off the power, and talking about the inconvenience. We acknowledge it is inconvenient to lose your power for any reason, whether we're doing it intentionally or whether it's an outage. But we had a commenter post a note saying, what would you rather have? Would you rather be inconvenienced by having a forced outage that PNM caused, or would you rather lose your home to a catastrophic fire? And it was a great point, and we were like applauding that person for standing up, and we're trying to get that mindset, we're trying to change the thought process of our consumers to be more wildfire-aware and be prepared for what might happen, versus how we've normally lived. We've become a little bit complacent as a society, and we're trying to really drive that. So, we're doing everything we can to provide for that wildfire safety. And public safety power shut-off is just that one piece of it, where if conditions really are extreme, we're seeing really bad winds, we're seeing really low relative humidities, we're seeing really low fuel moistures out there, we would just turn the lines off, ride through the event. The challenge with that for us is, once we get there, we're going to have to go back and inspect every one of those line miles. And in our Silver City district here, which stretches from Lordsburg to Silver, out to Mule Creek and out past Cliff and Gila, all the way to the Arizona Line, all the way to the Cliff dwellings, up and down the Membras Valley, all the way down to Perrin Road in the south, it's a big district. We have about nine hundred miles of lines in those, and we're going to have to get eyes on every mile of that line. So, it's going to take some time to do that. We're going to be, it's an all-hands-on-deck situation for us. So, we will be bringing in crews from outside the area, we'll be utilizing our crews here in Silver City. We'll be bringing in some of the contract crews that work for us in other parts of the state, and we'll also call for what we call mutual aid. So, we'll be reaching out to partner utilities in this region to bring them in to have resources, so that we can try to get power back on as safely and as quickly as possible after the event. So, we're working on those things. Unfortunately for us, pretty much most of the areas PNM serves in New Mexico are what we consider a high-fire-risk area. They're areas that have a higher-than-normal potential for wildfire. And we have a map on one of the pages that show, and apart from communities like Deming, Almagordo, and in the city of Albuquerque itself, pretty much all the other communities PNM serves is a high-fire-risk area. And so, if we have potential storms hitting the northern part of the state, southern part of the state, it stretches our resources pretty thin. So, that's why we're talking about bringing in extra resources. If we can fly air operations, we're going to bring in helicopters and drones to help us patrol. There's some terrain down here in Grant County that you have to walk, you can't even get a UTV to because the terrain is too rough and too remote that we end up walking. But we'll do whatever it takes, and we're getting all of our personnel out there to try to help document what we find, get the patrols done, and we'll do what we call a step restoration. We'll start from the substations themselves and then work out to the end of the line. It's going to take us some time, but that's one of the things we're trying to do, is we'll have an event, we're going to do some notification, and then we'll try to notify everybody and post what we call estimated time of restoration, so people can plan their lives around how long it's going to take for them to be out. So, length of the storm, plus the length of time it's going to take us to inspect it, and then we're going to publish that as soon as we can after we take the outage, so that people kind of have an idea of when, what to expect from us. With that, we conducted some exercises with our field crews here locally, they've gone out and done some patrols, and with that, we've got a pretty good estimate of how long it's going to take for certain lines, but it depends on what the conditions are and how much extra resources we were. So, we know what it would take with our current crews, and then we have to figure out and scale it for how many crews are available for us. So, whether it's contractors, mutual aid, or other PNM crews, those times are going to be shifting depending on what resources we have available. We have a diagram on one that is our ideal scenario of notifications. So, we monitor weather, we're getting forecasts four times a day, and we're monitoring weather seven days out. The forecasts seven days out are a little fuzzy, but we begin monitoring, when we see stuff coming, we're monitoring that timeframe four to seven days. When we see something that hits our radar, we're reaching out to local governments, we're reaching out to first responders, hey, we're paying attention to this, we see this coming, so that they've got a heads up, so that they can plan along with us what we might need in case we have to do a public safety power shut-off. As we get closer to the event, the weather models get better, and so we have better granularity in what we might see. So, ideally, two to three days before an event, we will put out what we call a public safety power shut-off watch. Not dissimilar to a weather watch, it's like, hey, we're paying attention to this, this is out there, you need to pay attention. We're trying not to build any notification fatigue where people ignore signals that they're, hey, there might be some extreme weather coming, but we want to give them a heads up so that they can plan. So, whatever their life may need, whether it's adaptive services or whatever, we want them to be prepared in case an event happens. The day ahead, if it's still showing that it's going to be pretty extreme, that watch may move into a different kind of alert or warning that, hey, tomorrow we may have to do a PSPS if the conditions don't improve. And so, we will issue those warnings, and we're trying to hit as many media sources as we can. So, it's social media, it's radio, it's newspaper, everything we can get our hands on to try to get the message out to consumers, that's what we're trying to do. And we know that people get their news in many different ways, so we're trying to hit as many of those as possible to get the word out. And then, if, on the day of, if it really looks extreme, we're monitoring hour by hour what's going on, and we're actually sending out field personnel to do some field observations so that we make sure we know how the actual conditions are matching up with the forecast before we make that final decision. And then, as soon as we're making that decision, we're letting everybody know, hey, we're going to turn the power off, or we're going to cancel. And last week was pretty intense for us in the northern part of the state. Monday and Tuesday, we had a lot of the system throughout New Mexico, everywhere, here, Ruidoso, Santa Fe, areas east of Albuquerque, Las Vegas, New Mexico, Clayton, New Mexico, we had that on that non-reclosed status, and they were that way for the whole week. But we're also monitoring weather on Thursday in the area around Santa Fe and east of Albuquerque, we were considering a public safety power shut-off. And in the area east of Albuquerque, as of noon Thursday, we had folks spread out from the top of the Sandia Mountains all the way down through the canyons with handheld anemometers, measuring wind, reporting back to us what it was, and we made a decision about noon on Thursday that the conditions did not match the forecast, and we chose not to do that shut-off. But, you know, here we are, another week in New Mexico in springtime weather, and so we're monitoring what may come on Friday. And so, we're aware of the forecast, we're reaching out to our partners out there to say, hey, we're monitoring what's happening Friday. As of right now, we, the conditions are not to a point where it's warranting any kind of shut-off here in Grant County, the same thing in Lincoln County. It looks like the worst part of it for us is going to be in the northern part of the state. I did talk to my counterpart at Excel Energy, Southwestern Public Service, who serves southeastern New Mexico and into west Texas, and they're considering a public safety power shut-off for their entire system over there. So, that's seven hundred, over seven hundred feeters that they're going to turn off and impact potentially several hundred thousand customers. So, it's getting real, and things that you've been seeing on the west coast are moving east, and they're moving east into Texas too. So, you know, it's going to become more prevalent, and I think this is going to become the new normal for everybody. So, you know, our big thing is getting the word out and trying to keep our customers aware. We've been sending out some information, so there's some mailers out there that we've been mailing, there's going to be bill inserts, there has been some focused emails, postcards, we're trying to hit people multiple times so that they get information, which will refer them back to our website, so that they can get information and prepare themselves for what may come, whether it's more frequent outages because we're putting systems in non-reclosed, or because of a public safety power shut-off. But one of the things we have reinstituted is a program we called Life Watch, and it was people who have adaptive needs. So, whether it's oxygen, whether it's dialysis, whatever it is, it allows us to sign them up so they get an outage alert, and so they're getting these alerts, whether it's text message, email, whatever their preferred communication method is, they can receive that, and then they can designate one primary caregiver to get the alerts with them. So, normally, our system only allows one person per account to get outage-type alerts, but we've made a work- but we've, we've made a workaround to allow two. So it's the, the account holder plus a primary caregiver. Again, trying to have people be prepared for what may come because you may lose power. And then we'll be reaching out in newspaper and radio ads. But we've got some QR codes on the last page, you can scan those, it takes us to our website. So we're just trying to get the word out. We appreciate you allowing us to come and, and talk a little bit about public safety power shut off, so.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions, Councilor Connaught?
Let's talk about this Life Watch program. So you mentioned dialysis, which is near to me since I'm a dialysis patient. I can guarantee you, nobody in my clinic knows about this because we talk every single time we go to treatment. So you might be doing this, but you're not reaching the people it needed to be reached to. So you might wanna reach out to dialysis clinics, you might wanna reach out to HMS because they know who their oxygen patients are. Because if we don't know about it, then we're not gonna sign up for it, first of all. Second of all, telling me that my power's gonna go out and now I can't go to dialysis isn't gonna help me in any way. So is this actually providing like an, a nexter, you know, somewhere that people can go to get oxygen, to get their dialysis, to get the other infusions, chemo treatments, things that, that are important in this community? Or is it just a, hey, your power's gonna go out, sorry about that, hopefully you live? Like, it, it doesn't seem like this is enough information for anyone, much less for people who really need it and aren't getting it. And like I said, I can guarantee you, the hundred patients at the dialysis clinic have not even heard about this.
We took some folks who normally do political canvassing. And the people that we're aware of, at least at this point, they're going door to door and make sure we have their current information and talking them through about getting signed up. And then we're reaching out to some of these other areas. We've just been working on the notification piece of this for the last two weeks. So it's something fairly new. But we, we thank you for your feedback, Councilor, because some, some of my team here are taking notes, and that, that, this is the kinda feedback we're looking for. Because as we've reached out to communities and we've talked to various stakeholders, city, county leaders, state leaders, emergency services personnel, this is the kinda info we get. And it's helping us form our program and helping us evolve it and move it out. Because the thing that is, is tough for us is you don't know what you don't know, and you don't know how bad it can be. But first responders and community, looks at dialysis clinics and other folks, can give us information which will help us evolve that program and do better outreach. And so definitely appreciate that feedback.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, Councilor Connaught?
We had an incident, I think it was a few days ago, where a vehicle struck a telephone pole, and there was a big outage. I was in Walmart with a basket full of groceries when all the lights went out. Thank God the registers didn't go out, so. But anyway, I just wanna thank your crews for taking care of that. It was a unfortunate incident, but I know you guys do your best to address those, so pass that on to your people.
Will do, and we had some outages in both the upper and lower Membras Valleys because we had things on one shot and we had some problems in the, in the upper Membras. And then in the lower Membras, we, we had some trees getting in the line after that. So those crews out there were going up and down the Membras Valley, trying to get stuff put back together. And it was a longer outage than we would have liked, but we had resources scrambling, going everywhere. That, that's just the biggest challenge. Sometimes here, because of the distances, it's just, it takes us a little longer than even we would like. But we try to be respectful, try to get out there and get as much done as we can. But I appreciate that feedback.
Thank you.
Well, I wanna thank both Councilors, Prince, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I just wanted to do a quick dovetail on the Life Watch concerns and the vegetation management. I believe there's contact resources, and just for the broadcast, the minutes that we have here, contact information is up to date right now at pnm.com.
Yes.
Fantastic. And so if anybody's having any concerns with vegetation that's happening on power lines around their home, it's not a bad idea to be able to reach out with a phone call or fill out the form online. Same thing for the Life Watch one, you know, we're all kind of in the mix of what's gonna be the appropriate method of communication to reach the most number of people. I know the city and county, I believe, are using code RED. We've got a few emergency management systems that we're on contract with, that both city and county government that just wanna make sure if there are going to be concerns. Not sure if this is gonna be appropriate entirely for that one, but just if we can in any way share over who we already have signed up for certain types of emergency communications. I do feel it might be appropriate to include power outages, plan power outages on it. And yeah, a part of the kinda question that is coming up, you know, I know it's not like a one to one, but if we're all kinda drawn off of the National Weather Services, and we see a red flag warning is gonna be coming up for our community. What, as a part of your internal decision-making, are some of the metrics that we might be noticing as just citizens, citizen scientists that are looking at what's happening? Just so we can start to actually know, hey, we might need to be paying extra attention to the messages coming in on our phone, we might need to be keeping radar up a little bit higher right now. What kinds of things are we looking at right now that are a red or effective public safety power shut off call?
Though there's lots of factors, the red flag warning, it's, it's wind speeds in and around twenty-five miles an hour, gusts at thirty-five, relative humidity less than fifteen percent, and the National Fire Danger Information Rating Index. So all the Smokey Bear signs you see around Forest Service, that rating, whatever it is, it has to be high, very high extreme. So those are what go into the decision-making from the National Weather Service side of what's a red flag. Now for us, the system, because of the work we put in it, the system itself and just how it's designed, is pretty resilient. So we don't typically see too many problems. I mean, not to say that something couldn't blow in the line at thirty, with thirty-five mile an hour winds. But typically, we don't see problems till the wind is a little bit higher than that. So for us, the rule of thumb, depending on, the two big things are wind speed, wind gusts, and wind direction. If it's coming from the normal kinda prevailing wind direction here, south, southwest, we got a little more lightweight, it's gonna be above sixty miles an hour gust forecast before we start putting stuff in a non-reclosed status or looking more toward public safety power shut off. Again, it just depends on how bad it is. If it's coming from a non-pervailing direction, so anywhere else, north, east, those directions, we tend to see more problems at lower wind speeds. So give or take fifty miles an hour, but all of that kinda factors in. So in the modeling that we do, ten miles an hour wind speed has a pretty drastic change on what it is. So if the wind's not as much, but the fuel, the humidity and the fuel moisture's really dry, it drives us faster into turning stuff off. If the wind speeds are higher, but the fuel moisture is not so bad, it takes a little more wind speed to drive that decision-making. So those are the variables that we're kinda dealing with. But, you know, that's the thing, it's for us, we never thought we'd be fire experts and managing fire behavior and paying as much attention to weather as we do. And we got wind in the spring that we deal with, we have monsoons in the summer that we deal with. That has been the norm for electric utilities in the southwest for a long time. And now, we're all becoming fire experts and weather experts, and we spend a lot more time focused on it. So in my team, we are, we're looking at this four times a day. Six AM, noon, six PM and midnight, and we're rerunning the model every time, and we've got folks taking, keeping an eye on it. Anything changes, we start activating our internal emergency operations center so that we can start making decisions on how we operate the system.
Any other, Councilor Prince?
And then when it comes to potential opportunities for accommodation, you know, even with just a truck driving into a substation like we had last week, being able to plan out the time that we have then is especially important for folks that have refrigerated medications on top of oxygen concentration and what we already have to keep up with when it comes to medical personnel. When we're gonna be looking at potential outages, in the mornings, it's not super windy. We can expect the power probably to come back on if all the conditions are met internally. Afternoons, we might have to look at a few more outages in particular areas. If the wind's gonna be stretching into the night, we might have to start looking at what was gonna be, you know, a fifteen minute blinking event that we had that was happening with our winds a couple of years ago. That might stretch into hours at that point. For some of the windows that we're looking at right now, and I know the models for weather have been needing to be updated too. We're seeing different conditions when it comes to, we just get a forty-eight hour warning when we're gonna get snow when we would've known that we were gonna get it even a week ago. I'm just kind of interested just as far as, I know, again, it's not a hundred percent, but just for the times of outages, if we are going to be going through a high wind, high danger events and for it, we can see outages for a couple hours in an afternoon, we can see outages until the sun goes down and the winds die down. What are some of the lengths that we might be considering right now?
If we're in non-reclosed, some of the outages we saw, you know, it was, I think, four or five hours. And, and, and part of it is just making sure that we get eyes on the line and make sure everything is safe to re-energize, that, that's the biggest key. The issue with us, if we're doing a proactive shut off, is we love the daylight because our guys can work pretty efficiently, you've got real good view of the line, they can move a lot faster, and so some of those patrols can move along pretty quickly. If we go to nighttime where we're having to try to do some of this at night, the time is two or three X because it's just so much slower. And then we face challenges. You don't wanna put any personnel on somebody's private property in the middle of the night trying to patrol the line. It's, it's gonna be unnerving to the, to the property owner themselves, it can put our folks in danger as well. So we're, we're very cognizant of that, so we would do some selective patrolling, we try to stay on the roadways and then look at the sections in between when we get to daylight hours, once sunup comes in. In some of our exercises, we looked and the, the information sounds bad. With a skeleton crew, just our local crew in patrol, if we had to patrol everything on our distribution facility, so it's about seven hundred fifty miles here in, in Grant County, it would take three to four days to get everybody back on. Now that is absolutely worst case, and that's not everyone three or four days. So in the town, we can patrol those lines fairly readily, and the town will come back on fairly quickly if we even choose to take a PSPS in town. But the rural areas, those folks living out, white signal down in the Borough Mountains, out at Mule Creek and out past Cliff, the people going up the Membras and then all the way up to the Cliff dwellings, those folks are gonna see those long outages. So the way the patrols start is, we're gonna do sectional step restoration. So they'll start from the sub, they'll patrol between the sub and the first switch where we can open. If it's in the clear, we'll open and energize behind. And we'll just keep working our way down the line to try to get it back on. And we'll have multiple crews patrolling, so we may get two or three sections at a time. So that's a worst case with a skeleton crew, and then depending on the additional resources that we have available, we'll bring in, those times come down. So we're trying to be as efficient as we can, not to, not to scare anybody that, oh my gosh, we're, everybody, everybody in Grant County is gonna be off for four days, or, no, we're not saying that. So it, it's what resources are available, because if there's a storm coming through and it's coming through southern Arizona, southern New Mexico, going into west Texas, we may not have as much available resource. We may have to bring them in from Colorado, northern Arizona to help us out. So it, it's really about resource availability and then win.
I think that Councilor Prince has one more.
Yeah, yeah, just one last quick one. Um, it just, of course, you know, neighbors know each other out this way. The outage maps have always been phenomenal resources where we know if you do need to be able to get access, you know, head on up further north on sixty-one or thirty-five, and there's gonna be some power running up the way there. The PNM outage map is presumably going to be representing that if there do need to be de-energizes, that we're going to have those resources, and that's going to be updated along with everything else that.
Yes, and so those outage alerts, if they're for something proactive, your outage alert and/or the outage map will show it being for a public safety power shut off. It will be designated differently, it'll have a different color, a different icon for it when you're zoomed way out. As you zoom in, you'll get more clarity, and then again, we'll try to post those ETRs. Those ETRs are really idealistic, assuming we find no problems. If we start finding problems, then once that PSPS is restored, then we'll post an outage restoration and it'll go in to be just like a regular outage.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Councilor Connaught, Councilor Snyder, do y'all have any questions? Thank you. Next on the agenda is, oh, one more thing. I wanna thank PNM and Kevin Kadosa for your prompt response to things that are going on in Silver City where we need your help, thank you. Next on the agenda is eleven D, the approval slash disapproval of Resolution twenty-two-five dash oh-nine, a resolution for approval of the State of New Mexico's Capital Outlay Public Infrastructure Funding for Silver City's Main Street Great Blocks Project. Presenting will be the Main Street Director, Lefkowitz Oberg.
Hi, thank you. I'm really happy to have this resolution on the agenda tonight. So I am Charlotte Lefkowitz Oberg, the Executive Director of the Silver City Main Street Project. And we are an accredited organization with Main Street America and New Mexico Main Street. And through that accreditation, we are eligible to apply for the Great Blocks grant funding from New Mexico Main Street. They fund this program with capital outlay that they acquire for the Great Blocks grant. And we have applied for and been awarded three hundred thousand dollars for phase one of this project. And the project is looking to improve pedestrian safety and ADA accessibility downtown in the areas of Bullard Street and Texas and Yankee Street. We did a community input phase prior to the application, and we based the geographical location downtown and what to address on that public input that we received. And this is phase one of a two-phase project. So with this phase one monies that we were awarded, we will be able to do planning to become construction-ready. So we, we are excited about this project, we wanna make these improvements downtown. But this first phase will allow us to figure out what exactly, you know, can happen, what exactly will best serve our community, and then get construction documents so that we are then able to apply to New Mexico Main Street for phase two for construction.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments, Councilor Connaught?
Yeah, actually, I'm interested in this, the one that's on Yankee Street because I, I see that, two things come to mind. First of all, when the water's coming, it's gonna be going up the ramp, which is gonna be interesting. And secondly, you're putting a ramp to get on a street where none of the buildings are accessible. Not one of those can be entered by a person in a wheelchair. So to me, that one's kind of a, one that might wanna be reconsidered because it's not gonna be helpful in any way, shape or form.
Everything you see there is based on a walkthrough?
Yeah.
And just some ideas that came up?
Yeah, I was at that walkthrough. But that one, to me, is just kinda funny because if you get on the sidewalk, that's great, but you're not gonna be able to get into any of those buildings.
I'll note that.
Thank you. Were there any other council comments or questions? Thank you very much. Do I hear a motion? Councilor Prince?
Mr. Mayor, Council, I move to approve of Resolution twenty-two-five dash oh-nine, a resolution for approval of the State of New Mexico's Capital Outlay Public Infrastructure Funding for Silver City's Main Street Great Blocks Project.
Thank you. Is there a second, Councilor Connaught?
All secure.
Any discussion? Roll call, please, Mr. Sadeo.
Councilor Connaught?
Aye.
Councilor Prince?
Aye.
Councilor Snyder?
Aye.
Councilor Connaught?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Next is agenda item eleven E, the approval slash disapproval of Resolution twenty-two-five dash ten, a resolution authorizing a grant application for the emergency operating funds of the New Mexico Board of Finance for the Henry V La Brotto Morales Recreational Center by the Town of Silver City Council. Any questions or comments, Mr. Brown?
Mayor, Council, the town was originally awarded a total of twelve million dollars from the state for this project. They have struggled to find the last one point five million dollars of the funding. Apparently, they gave it away to somebody else. And so they asked that we submit our application to this grant program, which we should be okay with.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Brown? Do I, any discussion?
Did you say a million and a half?
Yes, we're only doing a million in this application because the project is actually a half a million dollars under budget.
Do I hear a motion, Councilor Connaught?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve of Resolution twenty-two-five dash ten, a resolution authorizing a grant application for the emergency operating.
application for the emergency operating funds of the New Mexico Board of Finance for the Henry V La Bura Morales Recreation Center to provide the Town of Silver City Council.
Do I hear a second? Councilor Snyder?
A second is stated.
Do you have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Roll call, please, Mr. Snyder.
Councilor Ben Condon?
Aye.
Councilor Prince?
Aye.
Councilor Snyder?
Aye.
Councilor Condon?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next is Item 12, approval slash disapproval. The approval slash disapproval of closed executive session pursuant to NMSA 1978, Section 10-15-1H6, for meetings subject to the attorney-client privilege pertaining to threatened or pending litigation in which the public body is or may become a participant. Do I hear a motion? Councilor Condon?
Sir Mayor, I move to approve of closed executive session pursuant to NMSA 1978-10-15-1H6, meetings subject to the attorney-client privilege pertaining to a threatened or pending litigation in which the public body is or may become a participant after a five-minute recess.
Is there a second? Councilor Prince?
Second, the motion is stated.
Any discussion? Roll call, please, Mr. Sadeo.
Councilor Ben Condon?
Aye.
Councilor Prince?
Aye.
Councilor Snyder?
Aye.
Councilor Condon?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We are back in session. No matters other than those included in the motion to go into executive session were discussed. Mr. Sadeo, will you please conduct a roll call to affirm that statement, please?
Councilor Ben Condon?
Aye.
Councilor Prince?
Aye.
Councilor Snyder?
Aye.
Councilor Condon?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. No matters other than those intended in the motion to go into executive session were discussed. This concludes the business of the Town of Silver City. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Prince?
I'm moving adjourned.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We are hereby adjourned.